Good morning, everybody, and welcome to the Center County Board of Commissioners meeting for Tuesday, November 24th. We welcome you all, hope you're all well. As we get ready for this Thanksgiving season, we again look forward to the meeting today and the Thanksgiving season that is upon us. So if you would please rise if you're able for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, thank you all very much. We do have on the agenda here an opportunity for public comment. If there is public comment at this time, we would ask individuals at this point to simply hit star five on their phone's keypad, again, star five, and that would allow them to signal that they'd like to speak, and we will take individuals in order that they raise their hands. Okay. Okay, good morning. Your line has been unmuted, and we welcome you to offer any public comment at this time.
Hi, this is Andrew O'Neill of State College. I'm calling, well, attending, whatever the proper verb is, to urge you to act on the Center County Freedom Fund's action to determine who is incarcerated in the Center County Correctional Facility. It is especially important during COVID to know who these people are because our community deserves to know who is being held behind bars, what their lives look like while they're inside, and accountability is critical to government function. And these institutions are taxpayer-funded, so you owe us this information. Thank you for your time. Bye. I'm done.
Okay, thank you very much, Andrew. We appreciate that. We will take the next person for public comment, and we will recognize them at this point. Hi, good morning. Your line has been unmuted. Please feel free to offer public comment at this time, and if you could state your name and the municipality you live in, we'd appreciate that very much.
Absolutely. So, good morning, everybody. My name is Maddie King. I live in Ferguson Township, and I have for my entire life. And I am here today to voice my ardent support of increased transparency of the Center County Correctional Facility. So as I have outlined for you in each of you in direct communication, it's imperative that our commissioners and the prison board take action on a data publication that is already being modeled by adjacent counties, and even very conservative ones that have immense and much larger prison population in their county jail than we do here in Center County. So we're not going to take action on this data publication and the various fields that I have, that we worked as a community to line up for you, because this is a simple initiative, it's a bipartisan initiative, or that it's already being modeled. Although all of those things are true, we're going to ensure transparency because access to information about our government is a public right, and it needs to be protected by our elected officials. Each of you ran on transparency in some capacity, and have spoken to it in the past, and I'm just here to encourage that you extend that to our county jail. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for offering the comment. We appreciate that. We are going to now accept another individual's public comment at this time. Good morning. Your line has been unmuted. If you would be willing to state your name and the municipality in which you're calling from.
Hi there. My name is Jupiter. I live out in Bellefonte, and I would like to voice my support for both of the previous comments, as well as just add that especially now it is imperative that we have this information because in the time of COVID, prisoners are at a much higher risk for contracting COVID and experiencing the repercussions of catching this disease. There have been many people who are within prisons who have died of this disease or who are experiencing long-term hospitalizations because of it. So I would also like to urge you to act on the campaign that you ran on with regards to transparency and release the names and give us more information about what their lives are like inside. Thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you very much for offering the public comment. We appreciate that. We're going to be, all right. All right, so we have no more public comment at this time on the call there. And what we'll do is for all the people who have made public comment, we'd be happy to discuss this, and we would strongly encourage you to attend our next prison board meeting, which will be in December, and we would be happy to give you a little bit of an overview, actually quite a lengthy overview, of the steps the prison board of inspectors in Center County have taken to make sure that we are keeping COVID-19 at bay in the facility and the many, many steps we've taken. And I think that you will find that our staffs have been leading the state when it comes to keeping the individuals who work in the facility and also the individuals who are incarcerated there as well. And so we would welcome you to join that prison board of inspectors meeting, and we'd be, we'll be putting that information out on our county social media, also on our remote public meetings page on our county website. We'll have that information as well. If you have any further questions, feel free to email us at boc@centercountypa.gov. Again, boc@centercountypa.gov. But we thank you for your comments today. We appreciate them. Okay. Seeing no more public comment at this time, we'll look for a motion to approve our minutes from November 17th, whether there be a motion to approve.
A motion to approve the minutes from the November 17th Board of Commissioners meeting.
I will second that.
The move is seconded. Any final discussion on the minutes? Hearing none, seeing none, all in favor say aye. Aye? The motion is carried. Okay. All right. Moving into COVID-19 planning and response, we would like to turn it over to our administrator, Margaret Gray, to give an update on where county government is situating itself and making sure that we're prepared for this wave that's coming and the increase in cases we're seeing here locally. And we'll turn it over to Margaret at this point for an update on what county government internally is doing for the pandemic. Margaret?
Okay, thank you very much. As Commissioner Pipe said, unfortunately, we are seeing an increase in the number of COVID-19 cases across our region, and we do know that significant community spread is taking place. That situation in conjunction with the orders last week from the governor and the Department of Public Health Secretary regarding travel, testing, and masking, which took effect last Thursday, the commissioners, in conjunction with the president judge, have identified and revised the protocols, operational protocols for Center County government. Beginning the Monday after Thanksgiving, Monday, November 30th, offices will return to full remote work status while keeping our services intact. And what this means is that all employees who are able to do work remotely will be working off-site. It's somewhat easier for us to pivot back to this status than it was in the spring because many of our employees are now equipped with laptops and Citrix licenses and so forth, so it's an easier move back in some regard. But we will be working to have as few people in our buildings as possible starting Monday for the period of November 30th through December 11th. The commissioners will reevaluate this status at somewhere before the end of the two-week period. We will be keeping our receptionist desk open so that people may drop off mail and packages and so forth, but the buildings remain closed. That has not changed throughout this pandemic. Most noteworthy, I believe, or additionally noteworthy, is that our Tuesday Board of Commissioners meetings will move to a virtual platform for December 1st and December 8th. So next Tuesday, we will not be in this room. We will be on our virtual platform along with our CNET partners live streaming this for us as well. And those are the major revisions to the policy. Of course, we continue to have a masking requirement for all employees and visitors in this building, and as I said previously, the buildings are closed to the public except by appointment and special circumstances. So that sums up the major revisions.
Thank you very much, Margaret, and we appreciate the partnership and collaboration we continue to have with our courts. President Judge, President Pam West, issued an order that was similarly very well worded, very well done to mitigate the spread in the courts, and so we appreciate everything that her and her team are doing in the court, so we appreciate that so much. But thank you, Margaret, for the update. We appreciate that very much, and we again hope everybody stays safe as we enter into the holiday season. Okay. Anything else under COVID-19 planning and response that we'd have to discuss? Okay. All right. We will turn it now over into contracts, and we'll welcome our controller, Jason Moser, to discuss a letter of engagement. Good morning, Jason.
Good morning. Thank you. Yes, this is a letter of engagement with Millman for our Gatsby 75 Other Post-Employment Benefit Financial Reportings, or OPEB, and this would be for a valuation report for fiscal year 2020 and an interim report for 2021. The valuation reports are every other year, the interim reports are every year, so this year, upcoming 2021, the total contract is $18,111 instead of $4,500 or so, so, but that's because of the two reports. And so just looking to have that added to the consent agenda for next week.
Mr. Controller, thank you very much. Any questions from the controller?
None.
Okay. What's your motion?
Motion to add the letter of engagement with Millman to next week's consent agenda.
Second.
The move is seconded. All those in favor say aye. Aye? Motion is carried. Thank you very much, Mr. Controller. All right. Treasurer Kennedy, we will welcome you and turn it over to you for contract renewal. Good morning.
Good morning. We currently contract with the Pennsylvania Game Commission to sell licenses through their point-of-sale system, and we simply have a new contract in place, an updated contract. Not a lot of changes to the contract. There are some more consequences for agents who don't comply with ACH requirements per the contract, and that's about the only real change. They're implementing a new system this coming year in 2021, and so they want this new revised contract in place for that. And we approved, or I should say, the board approved a very similar contract at the beginning of the year for Fish and Game for their point-of-sale license system. So I'm just asking to add this to the consent agenda, please. Do you have any questions?
One question.
Okay, thank you very much. Any question?
What sort of animal is that on your mask?
Oh, it's the "Don't Tread on Me" snake, but he's wearing a mask, and it says "Don't Breathe on Me."
Oh, okay. There you go.
Add a little levity.
All right. Any questions about the contract? Seeing no questions about the contract, we look for a motion.
Motion to add the contract renewal with the Pennsylvania Game Commission to next week's consent agenda.
Second.
The move is seconded. Any final discussion on that? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. Aye?
Thank you all, and happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you.
Very much, thank you. All right, we'll welcome up Jeff Warren, our Director of EMA, to discuss the grant agreement. Good morning, Jeff.
Good morning, everyone. I'd ask the commissioners to electronically endorse the hazardous material response fund grant agreement, and that's for the state fiscal year 2020-21, and the period for this is actually already in progress. It's July 1st this year through June 30th of 2021. The amount of the grant is $14,273. Now, commissioners, you already approved the narrative and the budget for this grant several months ago, and then it was forwarded to Pima with your endorsement for that. Now, Pima has approved it. They've sent it back for the approval of the actual contract, and that's what this is.
Okay, thank you very much, Jeff. Any questions for Jeff?
Jeff, is this a 512s amount, or is it the full amount for the full year?
That's the full amount for a year. It's with the manufacturing facilities that report their hazardous materials through Tier 2 reporting, this is, there's a formula they use for the money that they get from that, and so this amount changes every year. This is actually a little less than what we got last year.
Okay. Thanks.
Okay, thank you, Jeff. We look for a motion.
Motion to add the grant agreement with Pima to next week's consent agenda.
Second.
The move is seconded. Any final discussion on this? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. Aye? The motion is carried. Okay, Jeff, thank you so much.
Thank you. Everybody have a happy Thanksgiving and stay well.
Thank you, you too. At this time, we will be joined by Natalie Korman via phone, and we welcome Natalie at this time. Good morning, Natalie.
Good morning, commissioners. So I'm filling contracts on behalf of the MHID, earlier I mentioned, Drug and Alcohol Office, as well as children and youth. So I'll start with the MHID Drug and Alcohol Office. Contracts 1 and 2 are specific to our intellectual disability services. With the ARC and CARES Essential PA, they provide a variety of transportation, supportive employment, and home and community services for individuals. Those two totals equal $46,666, with the county share being $2,153, and all for the current fiscal year, July 1, 2020 through June 30, 2021. And then contracts 3 through 9 are a variety of our drug and alcohol services. They include non-hospital treatment and rehabilitation, case management, halfway house, medical assistance treatment, outpatient, intensive outpatient. So a variety of our drug and alcohol services are listed with these providers of 3 through 9. Those contracts total $71,262. The county share is $1,770, and the federal share is $17,349, and the remainder is state-funded for those programs. And that's all for MHID.
Look, is Mike freezing up?
Sorry, did you ask me a question?
No, it appears Mike might be frozen on the screen. Or network. All right. Maybe at this point, shall I? He's rebooting? Okay.
Thank you.
He's back?
Hi, everybody. I'm not sure, I think I'm back. Is Natalie still presenting? I apologize.
Natalie made it to the end of the nine MHIDEI items, and I was getting ready to make a motion, but we wanted to wait until you were back.
Okay. Yep. Please feel free to make the motion. Thank you.
All right. Motion to add the mental health, intellectual disability, early intervention, drug and alcohol items 1 through 9 to next week's consent agenda.
Second.
The move is seconded. Any final discussion on that? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. Aye? Motion is carried.
Okay. So I will go through these 20 children and youth contracts. I know it looks daunting, but they're actually broken out nicely, so we can do this. So contracts 1 through 19 are all specific to the current fiscal year we're in, July 1, 2020 through June 30, 2021. And the contracts 1 through 19 total $3,030,876, with the county share being $639,761. So contracts 1 and 2 are specific to our county, they're by our Safe and Children's Advocacy Center, they're for our child abuse prevention programs, and then the forensic interview services that are conducted at our Children's Advocacy Center. Contracts 3, 4, and 5 are specific to legal services that we need, so Kimberly Hamilton Esquire, Claire Kimmel Esquire, and then we contract with the Center County Public Defenders Office as well. Turning to the page, contracts 6 and 7 are for counseling services. Contract 8 is for Wardell and Associates. It's our large one, as you can see, for independent living, residential, and reunification. We often call them FICs, if you hear that term with us, so they are our local partner for us. And then contracts 9 through 19 are all for childcare services that we need to have, so those are the large bulk of our services. And then the final contract, number 20, is just following up on fiscal year 19 and 20. We just had an invoice come in late for a contract total of $60, with the county share being $12. So those are the 20 contracts for children and youth.
Thank you very much, Natalie. Any questions for her? Okay. Is there a motion?
Motion to add children and youth services items 1 through 20 to next week's consent agenda.
Second.
The move is seconded. Any final discussion on that? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. Aye? The motion is carried. Okay, thanks again, Natalie. We appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
We may have somebody who would like to ask a question on that item. Let's see if they had a question on that. My apologies here. Let's take that now. Yes, hi, this is, your line has been unmuted. Do you have a question for us?
I'm sorry, I do not have a question on that item. I thought that this was the public hour.
Oh, 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 that happened earlier in the meeting.
Okay.
We will have another meeting next Tuesday, and if you'd like to join us for that for public comment, you can offer that at 10:00 a.m. on Tuesday, the 1st.
All right, thank you.
Have a nice day. Thank you. Okay, we have our consent agenda in front of us. Is there a motion to approve that consent agenda?
Motion to approve today's consent agenda.
All those in favor say aye. Aye? Motion is carried. For liquid fuels use, we'll turn it over to Margaret.
Yes, this item is a fee for local use application to PennDOT from Miles Township. The project is for paving and widening Route 864 and repairing the drainage areas in the amount of $30,000. So this was a project approved previously by the Board of Commissioners and Miles Township, and we're ready to submit to PennDOT.
Okay, that's your motion to approve.
Motion to approve the submission of the Miles Township application.
Second.
The move is seconded. All those in favor say aye. Aye? Motion is carried. Thank you, Margaret. We have a motion to approve reappointments to the Conservation District Board of Directors. Is there a motion to approve them?
Motion to approve the ABC reappointments.
One of, I am one of the appointments, so I don't know if it would be appropriate for me to, I can make the motion and then recuse myself from the vote.
Okay, that sounds good. Okay. So we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion on these items? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye?
I recuse myself.
Any abstentions?
I abstain.
Okay, thank you. Passes with two yeses and one abstention. Okay. Margaret, anything to report under Administrator's report?
Not today.
Okay. Commissioner Higgins will turn to you for a check run.
Sure, we have a check run today in the amount of $2,424,62.73. Again, a larger-than-average check run due to our CARES Act distributions to county small businesses and nonprofits. Thanks to an email from our controller, Jason Moser, the stack today includes 30 checks to small businesses totaling $370,000, and 78 checks to nonprofits, which is sort of the first batch of checks to the nonprofits for $686,000, totaling just a little bit over a million. And so far to date, we have sent $5,152,598.92 to center county small businesses. I would like to make a motion to approve the check run dated November 20.
I will second that.
The move is seconded. Any final discussion on the check run? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. Aye? Aye? Motion is carried. Okay. Any voter registration reports, Steve?
There is not one today. Thank you.
Okay. We do want to remember, or recognize and remember that we have, our offices will be closed on Thursday and Friday as we read into the Thanksgiving holiday. We hope everybody stays safe and is able to enjoy time with family virtually, maybe a phone call, but do as much as you can to stay safe during this Thanksgiving holiday. Look for any executive sessions we need to report at this time, Margaret.
No executive sessions to report. The board does need to meet in executive session to discuss a personnel matter.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Margaret. We will take any questions from the press at this time. There's no press in the room, but if there's anybody on the phone that'd like to ask any questions from the press, please feel free to hit star five, and we'll recognize you in that, in order that you do that. Okay, we're seeing no questions right at this point. We look for a motion to go into executive, actually, why don't we take care of the salary board meeting first and then re-adjourn the commissioners' meeting and then go into executive session, if that's okay with everybody? Does that work for everybody in there?
You want to, are you asking for a motion to recess?
Yes, please.
So motion to recess at 10:26.
Second.
All those in favor say aye. Aye? We are recessed. At this time, we'll call to order the salary board meeting, and if it's okay, Stephanie, for you to stay here for that, is that okay?
Yeah.
Super, thank you. All right. This time, we'll call to order the salary board meeting. We look for any public comment for the salary board. Seeing no one at that time, we'll look for a motion to approve the minutes for the Thursday, November 19th salary report. Is there a motion to approve those minutes?
Motion to approve the Thursday, November 19th salary board meeting minutes.
Second.
The move is seconded. Any final discussion on them? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. Aye? Motion is carried. Okay, and Margaret, we'll turn it over to you for introduction and discussion on this item.
Okay, thank you very much. As you are aware, our Director of Emergency Communications, our 911 Center, is retiring as of December 31st. We searched for this position by externally posting and recruiting candidates, and we've gone through that process, and the result of the process is the appointment today of Norm Spackman as the Director of our Emergency Communications Office. There were several candidates. Norm clearly was most qualified. He's been with our 911 office since 2001, so he's been here for 19 years. He's worked very closely with Dale Neff. He understands the operations of Center County's 911 Center and the importance of this service that we provide to our community. So the action or request for this morning is the appointment of Norm Spackman at an annual salary of $72,924, which would be effective January 1st, 2021.
Okay, thank you, Margaret. We do have a month or so, a little bit over a month, to thank Dale, congratulate him for his decades of service, but I think I would just start to say, you know, we've worked with Dale for a number of years now, and he's been just a tremendous asset to emergency communications, building on the success of prior directors, and he will be sorely missed, but we do know that Norm will be an able, capable, and terrific director, and so we thank him for putting his name in the hat and really excited for what he's going to do with the agency going forward. But thank you for that presentation. We'll turn it over to Fisher Higgins if he has any thoughts, and then Commissioner Gershman.
Sure. Again, thanks to Dale for the wonderful job that he and his team have done. Norm's been a key part of that team, and I've been working very closely with the two of them, much more closer than usual, since my reappointment, well, my, sorry, my appointment to the statewide 911 Advisory Board. Both great people, you know, sorry to see that Dale is leaving, but happy to see that we have a very capable replacement already in the wings and ready to hit the ground running on January 1st. So thanks again to Norm for accepting our offer. So that's my bet.
Jason, any thoughts?
I just, you know, echo the comments already made to thank Dale for his service to the county and look forward to working with Norm moving forward here in his new position.
Yeah, I think we've been very blessed with having great leadership in the 911 office for a very long time, and I think Norm's appointment will add to that legacy, and I think it will be, his experience will be well-suited. think it will be well... His experience will be well-suited to leadership into the future. So, thank you all for cooperating and getting the right person into the right position.
Well said, everybody. Would there be a motion then to this effect?
Motion to approve the promotion for Norm Spackman to... From full-time Assistant Director to full-time Director of Emergency Communications.
Second.
The move is seconded. Any final discussion on that? Hearing and seeing none. All in favor, say aye. Aye? Motion carries. Okay. Thank you, everybody. We look for a motion to adjourn the salary board.
Motion to adjourn salary board.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We're calling the commissioners' meeting out of recess, and we would look at this time to go into executive session. Margaret, do you want to do it now at the tail end here?
Yes. You're great.
Okay. Is there a motion to go into executive session?
Motion to go into executive session at 10:31.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thanks, everybody. Have a great day.